We will call the city, a Laverne joint meeting with the MDD to order it's five forty-seven. And we have a forum.
I don't think I have a forum for MDD unless there's another person on the call. Are you on there now?
Yes.
Okay, sweet, we got one.
Okay. So with that, would everybody please stand for the notification and the party.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we are thankful for all that you bless us with. We ask that you continue to bless us, our minds and our hearts as we make decisions that serve our systems the best. We ask that you please watch over those that watch over us, here at home especially, but also abroad. As things are, again, becoming tumultuous. Please watch over those and we pray over those that have been stricken with COVID in this latest cycle. In your son's name we pray, amen.
I just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And in the Texas way, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. Done?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so we'll move on to item four, discussion, action, resolution, economic development. Discussion for the proposed economic development project, Texan store LLC, item with MDD and city. So, everybody received the contract, any contract?
I want to. They're printing over everybody.
Oh, gotcha, okay, okay.
I thought that was what was in my file.
Okay. Gotcha. So while we have a second, how you doing tonight?
It's Monday.
How busy is your port economy by D? I mean, is it astronomically busy every weekend?
Yeah, the weekends are waiting room.
Is it?
Yeah, it's crazy. She said they've been up to two hour waiting. I don't know how I would wait though.
Yeah. Well, I knew. Well, more of the weekend. We were down there, we just hop into Cook Inn every night. There's not a lot of options, we had a large party.
Yeah, sometimes that's better. Unless you just wanna go hang out and listen to music and eat before.
Yeah, I think y'all had Tracy Bird that night.
Oh, yeah.
Artist ninety-nine, so. Okay. Yvonne, you wanna walk into details? The biggest change we had really was the one ten.
Changing it to the one ten.
Yeah.
And then the quarterly payments, instead of being twenty-five thousand, were twenty-seven five hundred. The date, instead of being twenty-twenty-two, we moved it to twenty-twenty-three because that would be one complete year after their estimated completing date. Because we can't very well ask for a report when y'all just opened. Those are the major changes from the original documents.
Yeah, we pretty much ran through this at the last meeting. Does anybody have any, is there any discussion, any questions anybody has? I don't wanna rush anybody.
No.
If I don't hear anything, I mean. From a council standpoint, do we have a motion to accept this contract?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Jury makes a motion, Amanda seconds. Any discussion? Any?
So timeline, it would obviously be as quickly as possible. We're not, we won't drag anything out. I know she mentioned two thousand twenty-three. I know, but we'll by far beat those deadlines.
That's what we were given.
Yeah, no, I know, we give.
Oh, okay.
We always on for paper, but we always beat that, so.
Gotcha, okay. You wanna make sure you're, you know, there weren't any questions?
Oh, and it's tough out there, yeah, with supplies and what you can get and can't get right now.
Alright, now he, hearing anything else, all those in favor, signify that's hanging on.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes from a city council standpoint, MDD. Danielle, since I wasn't hearing about.
No, that's just the city.
That's just the city, okay, sorry.
If you look at the end of them, it'll tell you which group is approving like.
But that, that was not an A on the contract.
No, A was supposed to be discussion.
Just went right into B.
Oh, okay.
Well, B is a resolution, not.
Right, that's what y'all disapproved.
Okay, that wasn't what the motion was, the motion was on the contract.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So we do need to move to item B.
So let's do that real quick, discuss possible action or resolution number zero eight one six two one dash zero one, authorizing interlocal agreement and real estate sales contract with the Laverne Municipal Development District and City.
So you want a motion on that now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution number zero eight one six two one dash oh one, authorizing interlocal agreement and real estate sales contract with the Laverne Municipal Development District.
I'll second. Okay. Danielle seconds, or Danielle makes a motion, Justin seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, discuss interaction on the interlocal agreement between the city of Laverne and the Laverne Municipal Development District.
I'll make a motion that we, the MDD approves, interlocal agreement between the city of Laverne and the Laverne Municipal Development District.
I'll second it.
Martin makes a motion and Danielle seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, signify that's hanging on?
Aye.
Motion passes. Last item on this, discussion of possible action on the performance agreement between the Laverne Municipal Development District and the Texan LLC, MDD.
I'll make a motion that we approve the performance agreement between the Laverne Municipal Development District and Texan Store LLC.
I'll second it.
Okay, Martin makes a motion, Danielle favors, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Do you wanna take a break and come on the documents?
Yeah, we can do that. So y'all wanna take a, we've got a few minutes, five, seven minutes, recess.
Five of y'all over there, you gotta go stretch up?
Yeah.
You don't wanna get a picture?
Well, I can tell you this for sure, most of us that have votes.
Ma'am, who's signing Cynthia's place?
Are looking forward to this.
Amen.
So that.
And Elon our treasurer, right?
Well, it has her listed as secretary and treasurer.
But it was either same, because she told me she was secretary, she told me she was gonna be here. That's why she's there. So who's our treasurer, Elon, right?
Yeah.
I'll have something, I'll call them. Alright, so sign me first. That's resolution for seventy-seven.
They're all marked, all the places.
So basically, the Texans needs to sign their agreement, that was the only one I found, they need to just.
And Justin, I'll tell you what, when you go to coast and you're pulling a boat and you don't grab lunch. When you start going that direction, you can't get into a Laverne, you can't get in all these places because you got a trailer. We lived in the last time when we were on Port Connet, we lived in the Victoria. I told my wife, I said, man, I hear their hamburgers are great, I'll order them up, we'll eat them on the way down, and they were.
Oh, that is him.
One more piece. Yeah, that's the big one.
So when COVID first started, I was reading my email.
Right here?
Yes, sir.
What was that doing? I ordered on the app, and I hit there and I was like, I'm still the door, it's not.
I'm sorry, I tried to read it, she had my old that one.
My boat is like fifteen feet tall. I said, I ain't gonna make it.
Brian, we. You and Melissa. So I'll send all of, I'll scan it in, I talked to Jennifer, I think Melissa has.
It's okay, she's out.
Jennifer?
No, no.
Make sure you get a hold of that.
Okay. We will.
And then I'll scan all of these over here.
Do you, I'll say, and then I'll get a picture of all three of y'all socially distant.
I heard on the news today that the highest, the numbers now are higher than repeat.
Watch out, Brandon.
He is fast.
Let's see what his MROB is.
That's you, Bob. Well, I got your message, so.
I figured you did, I was trying to hurry and close your building down.
I'm the shortest.
I'm sorry, I just keep getting in your way.
You want this to go all the way, you got it.
I got it, thank you.
Yeah, we're, so we're losing business. We're at this, this is. Seventeen-year-old Labrador. I'm rocking a little boat, a little broke us.
We should be grading, we're all good, sign, sorry, I got your message.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, he was up there last night, girlin', and.
Okay, are we good?
Yes.
We'll do everything.
That's now?
Yes. We can send you some stuff if you'd like.
Yeah, so we will, he took care of it. So you don't have to worry about it. And then he sprayed Melissa Beck's weeds because. And then he said he walked down and talked to her. I understand the property's under.
I just wanna give you my information, I'm the president of the Greater Laverne Chamber of Commerce. We love to have you guys join, you can email me.
We'll do it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Alright, I don't know, thank y'all one night. Thank you. Congratulations, I was home. Alright, six oh one, so we're pretty much close to schedule, so we can move on and go to discussion of action on the budget, discuss. Oh, MDD needs to do E. Oh, sorry, I don't have.
And then you have F.
ENF, yeah, ENF.
So discussion of possible action regarding the facade grant at thirteen six nine three US Highway eighty-seven West, Old Sues Antique. So what is the discussion?
Yeah, well, it was in last week's packet of all the updates they wanna do.
Yes, and I don't have a different packet, and I asked if something came.
They wanna put a, like an umbrella front, canopy thing.
So basically, they're taking the old, they couldn't be here, and they had messaged me, I'm sorry. So they're taking the old facade off, it's like paneling, round paneling, and they're pretty much pulling it off, and they're putting either, oh yes, black exterior paneling, and they're either gonna use Mr. Kitty or Woolly Lamb as the trim colors on all the exterior of the building.
It looks like a gray, one color was like a gray.
That's what it's gonna look like, so it's gonna be a black and white building pretty much, and then the canopies are gonna go over the windows, and they're either gonna be a solid or striped color, and they're also gonna do all-new lighting. What's not included in the facade, and he's very aware, is the, he's gonna, there's a ramp. And he is gonna level that off a little bit, so.
Oh, that's cool, that looks cool, something different.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna look nice for.
Black or white? Black.
Those are the two exterior trim choices they had to chose, but.
Either way you go.
It should be on that next page.
Yeah, Woolly Lamb is white and Mr. Kitty is gray.
Can we get that quoted in the papers?
I've now said Woolly Lamb and Mr. Kitty three times.
And Tom Cat is the exterior black color.
Oh, the Tom Cats.
Tom Cats.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we grant the facade grant at one thirty-six nine three US Highway eighty-seven at the Old Sues Antique Building.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Um, I'll second it, but I don't know what I'm seconding, now I do, yes, I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? The question I have is just a reminder, this is five thousand dollars, right? Five grand?
That's what I was looking at for a second.
Yeah, that's what I thought, any other discussion? Okay, I've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, three zero, and it's approved?
Y'all ready for Casey?
Again.
That's an MDD.
Well, we've got CCI and MDD. So item F, discussion of possible action on financial assistance updating the entrance welcome signs coming into Laverne. So, who knows what we're talking about, I think I know what we're talking about.
I can, I can give you a quick update, Mr. Mayor, Council, MDD Board, thank you again for having me this evening. For council, it's gonna be a repeat, but basically, the Greater Laverne Chamber of Commerce is back to updating the welcome to Laverne signs. So the chamber helped put those in back in two thousand and five, and a few of our members have came forward and said, hey, those signs are starting to look bad, what can we do to get those updated? So we put together a very small but mighty committee of three, and we have been working since June on getting this project up and running. We have received quotes from local vendors and people locally that can do the project for us. The projects can include two phases, phase one is going to include pruning and cleaning up the current trees at both welcome sign locations, and then also as part of phase one is going to be removing the current rock that's on the structure and replacing it with the same rock that you find at the new laundromat. So it'll be a dry stack rock, and then we will get the sign pressure washed and repainted. So right now it's a baby blue color, but we know that Laverne is not baby blue, we are royal blue here, so we're gonna get it back royal blue. That'll be phase one, that will take place between October through December, and then early next spring, we'll have a full landscape placed out there. So we're working with local vendors, local landscape companies to do that landscape project for us. It will include a drip irrigation system, the city has graciously said that they would move the meters into their names and help with the cost of that water to keep the landscape. The chamber budget going forward will also include a small five hundred dollar annual maintenance of the side, where that's something we have not done since two thousand and five. I believe it was kind of a partnership between, the chamber put it in, and it was kind of like the city, y'all help kind of maintain, and we'll help maintain, and it happened or it didn't happen, so we're just, whatever we do going forward, we're gonna try to make sure that that sign stays in great condition for future generations. So we have a lot of community support, the chamber is made up of over a hundred and forty members currently, and when we mentioned this at the chamber meeting, we saw lots of head shaking, lots of smiles, yes, we like this project. We have numerous letters of support for the project, and we just turned in our application today for a GVC power-up grant. We are requesting twenty thousand dollars through the GVC power-up grant project, the overall project, I think today, once we kind of finalize all the numbers, it's actually gonna be closer to fifty-five thousand dollars, and that is to cover solar lighting at both locations, where before we'd only kind of thought maybe solar lighting at one location, but we're like, why not do it? So, we are here, I'm here on behalf of the chamber, Casey Tangers, late president of the Greater Laverne Chamber, we should have mentioned that at the beginning. We are here requesting a donation of five thousand dollars from MDD to help support this project. As you guys know, it kind of builds and drives, it welcomes people into our great town here in Laverne. We see it on your website, there's a picture of it, so it's used for all kinds of things, we see graduation pictures out there, we see local businesses using that as a backdrop for things, and so we just felt like it would be a good idea to come approach the city of Laverne, Laverne MDD and see if y'all would be willing to support this project.
Great, that was a great summary.
Yeah.
I had a practice, I had a practice round.
Okay, so this is a discussion of possible action, so I guess we could make a motion before we open it up to discussion.
I'll make a motion that the Laverne MDD donate five thousand dollars to the Laverne Greater Chamber of Commerce for updating the entrance signs coming into Laverne.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second from Martin, so any discussion, Martin or Danielle?
No, I listened to it the other day when she was here, and I mean, I think it's a great idea, they need, they need to be updated so bad.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I wrote, I wrote a letter to support it too, so.
I think it's a great investment.
So if the overall price is fifty-five thousand dollars, we think we might get a power-up grant from GVC for twenty, and then you want MDD to kick in for twenty-five, versus the other thirty thousand?
Well, we're asking, so the Greater Laverne Chamber of Commerce at the May county commissioners meeting received a five thousand dollar hotel talk, hotel tax occupancy, hotel occupancy tax, and so the chamber voted at our August meeting that we would earmark that five thousand dollars for this project, and then we have made, we have discussion, which we'll vote at our September meeting for the chamber to make up for any additional costs. So should we not receive the power-up grant, then the chamber is, we hope, at our September meeting, will be in agreeance to pay the full cost of it. We have that money available on behalf of the chamber to pay the full cost of the project, but we do feel like it's a community project, and we would love for everybody in the community to have some buy-in to the project, and that's why, you know, we're applying for the GVC power-up grant, twenty thousand dollars. The chamber's already said that five thousand we receive from the county commissioners could be earmarked for this, you know, we're asking for five thousand from you guys today, so that would leave about, I believe it's like twenty-five thousand dollars that the chamber would be responsible for, and we're already talking about next year what fundraisers potentially we're going to have to replenish that money back into our account, so there's future projects that we feel like we could, you know, take on, that we wanna do that, so. Yeah, we don't wanna just deplete our account, we, you know, we're gonna, you'll start seeing some different things happen within the chamber as far as fundraiser events as well.
Great. Jay, if I could interject?
Yep.
So knowing where, I mean, it's been a struggle for Yvonne to bring what we're gonna talk about next, it's just gonna be, I'm glad to bring that down to the balance level, and we'll dig into that deeper. I might would make the recommendation that, number one, since everybody sees these signs coming, you know, into town from those locations on eighty-seven, you know, we're trying to drive business here, it really falls specifically under the purview of the MDD and the benefits that these signs have as you look at the grandiose signs that you brought us has on thirty-five now, just how cool they look, so my thought is, is instead of, we're so tight this year that I can't see the city being able to do anything other than something that would be kind of, you know, not very significant, that we take that five thousand, we double it, go to ten thousand, and be more representative of what the MDD and the city do, the MDD is, just a suggestion, I'll throw it out there for y'all in discussion.
Now, that's exactly why I asked where the rest of the money was coming from, because it felt like five grand was a little light for a project of that scope.
I'll amend that motion to from five thousand to ten thousand.
I'll second your amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for this.
If we were in line, we'd be all the same way. Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both motion passes, three zero.
Thank you, and we will have an official ribbon cutting, regrind opening for that, the welcome signs, once they're, you know, at their completion, where we'll invite even those that helped to make the original project possible back in two thousand and five, since we're gonna be using the existing structure and just building upon that, so I'm kind of be on the lookout for that, so we're excited about this project and what it's gonna bring to the city, so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
You bet, awesome, thank you very much. Sorry for ENF, I had to go from this to this. Okay, now we can move on to item five. So A, discuss interaction with the city of Laverne, MDD's new school development district, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year budget. Further, Yvonne?
Balanced.
Long match, six hours.
Balanced. I didn't bring out my, my summary sheet of what I, how I got it to balance by chance.
What you put in email?
Yes.
Martin's a good servant.
He has, thank you.
Alright, you hear that, Martin? I'm out.
Be prepared.
Okay, so in order.
Sorry, did the printer do that?
That's okay, so in order to do this, I used a tax rate of seventeen fifty-two, which is what was discussed at the city council meeting. I lowered the COLA, remember, I always use five percent, I took it down to one point two five percent, and remember, that goes towards the pay scale, so some people will get the one point two five, but then they'll also get a stuff increase if they're due to gap one. I removed my COLA. We have two employees that don't take the medical insurance, but I normally budget for it, because you never know, that person might leave and then we have to pay for it. I went ahead and took them out this time, so fingers crossed they don't go anywhere, I don't think they will. I did move David back to fifty percent general fund, fifty percent water. I adjusted the sales tax because I got the numbers for August, which I'm sure y'all saw, they went up nine percent again. For the months that we have remaining, which we still have, three months left for sales tax, I was only using an average of three percent for each month. Well, we all know it's been over nine percent the last few months. So I adjusted that, and then I reduced the PD software from twenty-five thousand down to four thousand, and he also stated that that would include Wilson County Dispatch, so that four thousand is gonna pay for the CAD system and dispatch. So the twenty-five thousand holding number we had, I took that down. The cars, he did give me an update, it's going to be a total of ninety-three thousand dollars. I would just say leave the hundred thousand in there just for incidentals. But after that, every one of the budgets are balanced. What threw the budget over was the two new cars and that we had to absorb. What threw the budget over was the two new cars and that we had to absorb that officer from the SRO, from the school district. So, do you all have any questions? And I did tighten a lot of little things. I did not mark every one of those, because they all went down, they didn't go up.
The only thing I talked to Yvonne about really was, you know, with the two new vehicles, Public Works is in this budget, really nothing, anything, they need to build, they need, there's some things that they need and we need to probably look at pulling from, you know, reserves. But we even just kind of had a re-discussion about, you know, ordering one vehicle now and then looking at mid-year budget time, where our numbers were, because you know, we always historically make a budget amendment, mid-year, the one amendment, you know, looking at that. But it's, you know, we don't know where sales tax is going to follow the way things are going. You know, we're on a trend, we're up, it seems like every month on that. But probably as I've thought about it even further, it's like, probably need to go ahead and get those, you know, we know how long it took us to get a truck last year. So I know Caldwell, I think, does it say on Bruce's sheet if they're in stock?
These ones are in stock and he has stated that as soon as city council approves the budget, which is set for ninth...
September ninth? Will the small taxing unit notice this September ninth?
Then that's it. On September ninth, he will order them the next day.
So I can re, kind of retracting my thought of spreading that out, my suggestions go ahead and go.
Just, I did these just so you can see. Yeah, I got pictures here. Your total salary, you can tell the majority of it is general fund. And then on the general fund, you can tell that sixty-six percent of it is the PD, but you do have ten full-time officers, contract pay, overpay, night differential, and all those other big things that they get paid. And then the blue one is the total city budget, which is one point nine million dollars estimate. And fifty-seven percent of that goes to the PD.
So it's running consistent as it has over the years?
Exactly.
Fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent?
Yes. So...
God, it's kind of funny that when, in two thousand twelve, my first year, my first budget cycle, I think the overall budget was like one point one million and you were on to one point nine.
And that's just general fund?
Right. Well, everything's...
So which vehicles are we replacing this time for the PD? Because in the last two years, we've, we've gotten like three new vehicles for the money. Are you thinking the public works?
Donald is one, and then one of the Tahoe that is over a hundred.
She's got a new one.
Right, yeah.
So the one that the SRO drives is really, really old. And that's the one that is over...
That's the one that's probably over a hundred thousand. And then Donald, the one that they bought from Louisiana two or three years ago.
And so who is getting the two new vehicles that we're buying this year?
I know one is going to Donald, and I think the other one's just going in the fleet.
Going in the fleet. They're not all for specific officers.
Are they just a main part of vehicle?
No, but I'm just like, do we absolutely have to have new vehicles this year?
So my suggestion is, these vehicles are getting run twenty-four seven. They're not getting upgraded. So your daytime officer splits a vehicle and your nighttime officer splits that same vehicle. So whoever comes in at the next shift, so to me, they already have the ones we bought a few years ago, they already have quite a few miles on them, because they're getting driven twenty-four seven. So...
And it's very normal for a police department to replace cars, unfortunately, every year here. Because they put so many miles on them.
No, I get that. I was just like, you know, if need be to put it somewhere else. So...
Gotcha. I know we need one more for Public Works.
But we're hoping maybe a little one, maybe mid-year, if David's will ask that one.
And we're trying to do this within the budget, not...
Not with the police cars, yes.
Black paying for them.
Right.
Is there room, I mean, it sounds like the budget's kind of tight, is there room in the budget for a, for a whole car?
Oh, for the PD? Yes. It's completely balanced to the penny.
For two.
Mm-hmm. But none for Public Works.
All right. And so you're saying we should go ahead and get Public Works vehicles too, while we're at it?
No.
Yeah.
No.
I was just verbalizing here to Yvonne, you know, because she was able to bring the budget down to a balance level. We're at a hundred and fifty, something thousand dollar deficit at our last meeting. And given, you know, there is some shift and some give and take on the PD vehicles, typically, once they hit their hundred thousand mile mark, that's really what you want to fill them. And so it was just, it was kind of one of those passive thoughts, do we look at waiting mid-year, seeing where we're at, and then, or just get them done?
I don't think anything's going to get cheaper as we get further and further into the year.
No.
Dollars worth more today than it will be six months from now.
Yeah. Unfortunately. Yeah, so probably we may look at what we did last year, because we got such a deal on that second Public Works vehicle up in Grapevine. Just, you know, looking at what's around, you know, somewhere along those lines at that point, see how our cash flow rolls.
And we can also look at the end of the year also, because on August thirtieth, I don't let anybody buy anything. So as we get through mid-month, I know exactly where we stand. And if, you know, if there's money that can go out and, you know, like last year, they had enough money in PD, they went out and they bought extra set of tires and oil and filters and all that. So they already had that. I mean, hopefully, maybe...
So possibly some options. Public Works, they need about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for a building.
Oh, yeah, and they're both in fifteen thousand.
Which is not enough.
It's not going to get them anything.
And we need to take care of all of our departments.
Yeah.
Oh, you sure?
We have three months left for this year, right?
No, we have one more month.
One more?
To the end of September.
Your sales tax runs two, two months.
The high.
That's like a lot, yeah.
Right.
And a lot of the, you know, fiscal year twenty-one, you know, a lot of the numbers are looking like they're under budget. Am I reading that right?
You are.
And I know it's, there's a lot of...
We pay so much stuff on the credit card now, that it's hard to see what it looks like until the middle of next month.
Okay.
So the only thing that is true to what's on here is going to be your payroll, because as soon as we pay it, post. I did give everybody a copy of this small, I know there was some discussion about maybe not raising the taxes, but because we have to post this in the paper, I just kind of need to know what everybody's thoughts on this. Are y'all good with this?
Is this the number that you used in the budget?
Yes, it is.
So if we approve the budget, you'll have your answer.
Well, I need to post this and you won't approve this?
We can't approve the budget till next month.
Correct, correct.
Oh, we can't, okay.
Because I got to do a public hearing, or you all have to do a public hearing and all of that.
So me and Gary were sitting down today, you know, we talked about it last meeting, last Thursday, it's only seventy-five hundred dollars more for the entire city. I think that would be something good to put in that public post. You know, people are going to see the three percent, like, why didn't they lower it more? Well, when you realize it's only seventy-five hundred dollars for the entire city, that, you know, putting a dollar value to something, I think makes a little more sense to people than we lowered it.
Actually, it's only twenty-five hundred. It's seven thousand overall, but with that little bit, it's only like twenty-five hundred.
That's even better, right? So I think putting that in your, in your, I guess it goes to the newspaper and stuff, right?
Yes.
You know, people are going to see that tax rate increase of two point nine three eight percent, and they're like, well, why didn't they do more? So...
So what action are we considering tonight?
I just need your direction if you're good with this number, so I can put it in the paper.
I'm good with that number. There'll be a motion for that, Robert, so you don't...
No, I just...
Amanda said she's good with that.
Hey, Jake's...
Lots are going up and down.
Other than that, since we've just talked about general fund, everything else is pretty much the same. Water was a difficult one, because we could be exploding, and so...
Don't say exploding, water is...
Well, we don't know what is going to happen there, but we're good.
Well, what does that mean?
We could have potentially more development coming in.
How many installs?
Three hundred, you know, with what we have going on, it could be three hundred and fifty acres.
Just a few.
A skosh.
About three and a half of all beers.
But we are good. We do have it available.
Yeah.
It's just with the money.
That was some Nostradamus-level expectation management right there. Predicting the future.
Crystal balls, baby.
Yeah.
Crystal balls. Got to have one.
Anybody have any questions for me? You can contact me anytime.
Anything else on this? So we didn't need to do anything on A as far as a motion or anything like that? We just kind of discussed...
This is just a workshop. It does say action. Oh, there's an action.
Of course, it says consider action. Consider. Wondering if action we're going to consider.
Take action next meeting.
Do consider it.
And it suffices, okay. Anything else on A? Moving to B, discussion on capital improvement projects.
I did contact the drainage, clearance on the drainage today. Because I'm going to do it Friday, I forgot. But I did do it today, so hopefully we'll start putting some numbers together. That's going to be a baby all by itself, because that's not going to come out of the budget, it won't happen that way. It'll have to be a bond issue, especially when they come back with how much it's going to cost.
Kind of the street project, so we'll just kind of ease into this. All in, get their bond?
They had a meeting at three thirty today, and I have not heard back from them. I know I, I should have brought it up, but I would have really liked to do a contingency on that last. But if they don't, we'll put it on August ninth.
Please do.
I will.
In September?
I'm sorry?
You said August.
Yes, September.
It might be worth it. We'll give them, we'll give them this week. We see nothing, we may just call a special meeting.
Okay.
Give them all of it.
This is just not like them.
No, it's not very uncharacteristic.
So you sent out a thing last week or so about water wells and stuff and options with the well at the center of town? The old well that sucks.
Number one.
Oh, the two hundred, okay, yes, to run water to the park would be...
But then it was something about, he was, he talked about integrating that into the city and this and that. I know you said it wasn't going to be a good idea.
No.
Is there anything at all with water wells that we got looking at, water, other than...
At the transmission, another transmission line?
Yeah. We had a meeting a week ago Monday and talked about clearance, thought is, instead of transmission line, it pretty much comes from the old water tower. And if you follow the property at once, just to the left of the Valero Station, if you looked at it on a map, you could actually see a pretty clear line that goes right up to the elevated tank, running, we talked about twelve-inch line on that one. Versus, well, not versus, but clearance is thought is, with that looping the city, it would give equal pressure plane throughout the whole city. But in our discussions with David and Mark, we talked about the, what's the next step? What's, what's the city councils, you know, four years from now, what's going to be their next step as far as augmenting the water system moving forward? And that is, you're probably looking at acquiring another site to drill another well, preferably, and, you know, ideally, we'd like to find some Corizo, because, you know, Wilcox are three or four hundred GPM wells, where Corizos, the rock formations are larger, it's not as fine, so you don't have to have such a intricate screening system down at the bottom at the intake. But you can pull twelve hundred, thirteen hundred GPM at a Corizo well. Clearer, cleaner water, much more flow. And so...
Is that a deeper well or a different location or both?
Well, if you'll, what I learned through the years dealing with Copycorad, the challenge just got, whatever you call it, just down eighty-seven, the edge of the Corizo comes in, come in, actually, it's right below us, but there's usable water that's only two or three miles down the road.
And it's not that deep?
It's not that deep. It's going to be twelve hundred feet, where we're at four hundred with our Wilcox wells. Four, whatever, you know, that ball. So, so your cost to drill it's a little more expensive, but the bigger cost really is the transmission, getting it from wherever that location may be, and tying it back in the filter, because you got to get into the filter plant. You know, we've put all of our eggs, so to speak, in that basket of, you know, that filter plant is going to be point A, from that point, it gets dispersed to the city. So, so we did talk about that. Obviously, it's nice having our, our friends at Canyon, Rachel, in that contract. Do you ever pull that up?
I have a note to pull it up, but I don't mind.
It's on my computer, I'll look.
It's sitting right there. I wrote it today.
Just forget what that contract's going to run, because we know for a fact, Martin, I know, as soon as that contract's done, they want that four hundred service centers
So also part of water, you know, capital improvement stuff is, what we talked about after the February freeze is the generators and stuff.
They're working on grants for that right now, because the state came down, Mark was in some class where they are requiring generators at certain equipment, so he is working on all of that. He does not come back to work for a while.
Yeah, and we've learned that the power companies have, sorry, your CPS energy.
You're good.
The power companies are basically saying, we are guaranteeing you nothing. We have, ERCOT says, we're shutting down, we're shutting you down. And so they're forcing entities to rely, they've been a producer of our power.
Yeah.
CPS is regretting they were getting it for all of them.
So are these going to be solar or wind power generators that we're going to rely on?
We have. We have literally generators, pretty much at all of our locations, just about.
That's a bit facetious.
I, I thought you were... I have tasks to work with that, and he is actually already working on that project. The other thing I sent you all an email today talking about capital projects is, in the next seven to fourteen days, we're going to be getting that recovery, COVID recovery money. So I need the guys, they will be coming up with a plan to help to vote on what you all want to do with that money, keeping in mind that we're only going to get fifty percent of it now.
Okay, we're only getting half, we are getting half of it now.
Yes, and then we'll get the other fifty percent in exactly, apparently, exactly a year from the day we receive it. So...
What kind of money? Three seventeen?
Three eleven is what the check says, but when I looked it up, when I was in training for this money, it said three fifty-eight, unless the state's taking a portion of it, forty-four thousand of it.
And it was quite disappointing. Lindsay advised me Friday afternoon that Congress... Man, I was quite disappointed, Lindsay advised me Friday afternoon that Congressman Quayarm's office reached out for the.
For the tenth time.
Had reached out, uh, to invite me to dinner on Tuesday night, which I graciously accepted. Okay, congressman dinner at the Circle G in Poe, and then only to learn that they called, they reached out to City Hall again today and said, oh, something came up.
Wow.
So, I'm just, I'm flabbergasted and disappointed.
Put that in the paper.
He's not just disappointed.
Speaking of paper, he's flabbergasted.
Flabbergasted.
I guess in your, what, however it's gonna go to press about offsetting the, with the sales tax. That's something that, like we talked about the other day, a lot of people don't even realize that, that we.
On the sales tax?
That we offset property tax a lot with the sales tax, so, you know, that's another checkmark, right?
It won't, it, you know, these are actually.
These are required.
These are required notices, so the best thing I can do is come in behind it, in the manager's corner.
Yeah, okay.
And mention all these things, and to help, hopefully.
And foot what the property tax should be without that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll, I'll take care of that part of it.
Perfect.
Plus what, you know, Greg's getting, you know, all the comments. So. Anybody have any other questions? Not hearing any, do you have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Justin, motions, Martin seconds, discussion, all of you in favor?
Aye.
opposed, we're adjourned, city council six thirty.
We're moving to adjourn the MBD.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And now, and Martin makes the second, uh, any discussion, all of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at six thirty now.
Yvonne, thanks for spending all the time up here, so I'll be getting it done.
Oh, yeah, I felt so bad.
I saw it coming there Sunday, I was like, oh.